This is the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me and stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, we've got a, let's see, we've got about six items on the agenda for this evening. We're going to go through. The first one is going to be the presentation of the financial statements for the year ending in December, the year ended in December 20th, December 31st, 2024. Kathy?
Here too. Hi, I'm Michelle Graham with, I know I still want to say Bot Steel and Company. We merged in with UHY, so we're still the same people, the same group that have been coming out here and doing your audit for quite some time. I just have to get used to saying the UHY thing, so. What that did is gave us a whole lot more resources, gave us more people and the ability, had the ability to hire some younger folks. The small firms just have a really hard time with that, so we're really looking forward to having some more resources to keep, you know, as you know, probably from when you go out for a bid, when you, to get audit, there's just not enough of us accountants around that do governmental accounting. So I'm hoping that helps that and expands the practice here. So we did do your audit again this year for the fiscal year 1231, 24, and you guys are responsible for the selection of your accounting policies and the financial statements themselves. And we're here to give you an opinion as to their accuracy and then recommendations that go with that. We issued an opinion, which was an unmodified opinion, that's the best of the three possible opinions. An unmodified means that in accordance with the accounting policies you chose, which you guys do your accounting on the modified accrual basis. So that's not generally accepted accounting principles, but it's the, it's the accounting system that it works for the city. It's a little bit easier accounting and that's what you do your budgeting on and it, and there's no reason really to change that. So we make sure that you're in compliance with the modified cash basis of accounting. The modifications are for your long-term items. The fixed assets that last more than a year, your long-term debt and the pension, all the liabilities and all the stuff that goes with pension. So we look at the financial statements themselves, the footnote disclosures. Those footnote disclosures are an integral part of your financial statement. So the accuracy and the completeness of those are really important. That's where all the detail to the numbers that you look at. We did make two journal entries, so only two, one in, one in each one, one in the general fund and the other one was, Golden Bridge maybe? I already forgot. And I had looked at it right before here, but two, two entries, it was the road money that you get from the county and we always make that entry because it's not a cash transaction that goes through. And the other one, the other journal entry we made was just to put the court's cash on there and the corresponding liabilities. It's not any of the other activity. So the other thing that I always bring to everybody's attention, your financial statements, even being on a modified cash basis, there are some estimates in it. The cash amount, that's a hard and fast number, but you still include estimates mostly to do with fixed assets. So how you depreciate your fixed asset affects the lives over them, the expense of them. So that's one set of them, and then the biggest one is the pension. So you guys are in loggers and there are a lot of estimates that go into that pension liability that's on there and the deferrals and all those things. And they relate to actuarial, and I, and I'm not going to go over numbers at all, but if you want to look in your financial statements, I always point this out to everybody because I think it's one of the most important disclosures and pensions really had a lot of attention, a lot of places for a long time. You guys are in loggers is probably the, if not the healthiest plan, one of the healthiest plans. And you can see that in the footnotes, the, your pension liability, it, it covers 21 people and there's six people currently receiving benefits. So the liability that's projected out there, and that's based on a discount rate of 7%, that's one of the estimates. So your liability was $1,268. The assets that have been set aside are $1,338. So you actually, your financial position is greater than the projected liability right now. So you, instead of having a net pension liability, you have a net pension asset. Again, speaking to the health of the plan, like, you know, how they're calculating the contributions that you're supposed to put in and then you're putting them in as required. Now, on that same page, that, that discount rate with that $69,000 pension asset, if we would change the estimate and decrease it by 1%, you'd have a liability of $110,000. If we'd increase it by 1%, you'd have a liability, or you'd have an asset of $217,000, $300,000 swing. So that's why I mentioned estimates, estimates make a big difference. All of this is really reflected on the government-wide statements. It's not on your fund statements and the fund statements are what you use to manage the city on a daily basis. That's how you budget and function. So the other is more for borrowing, like when you want to, you know, bonding companies, loan companies, all those. They're looking at that government-wide, they want to see long-term rather than just what's it going to be for the next year. So there's a difference in the accounting there. Couple of things, we had two, so you have a letter there that, you know, goes through almost everything that I just said. There were two recommendations related to that, one of which is the budgets that I mentioned. So budgeting is a management tool and it's also required and mandated by state statutes. You cannot spend money without having a budget passed. Technically, to be in compliance with your state statutes, you need to amend that budget if your expenditures are going to exceed what you have budgeted. And so you had two funds, the general fund and your Park and Stormwater Fund, where the expenditures exceeded your budgeted expenditures. So technically you should at least amend that afterwards if that happens. Ideally, you would amend that beforehand, it's a budgeting tool. You're, you're saying to people, don't spend more than this, and then they have spent more than that. You probably were well aware of it and just didn't, you know, you were probably, I don't remember exactly. I think it was, maybe it was Catholic spending, I don't remember now, but it was a couple hundred thousand dollars. So it's not like the money's being spent without your knowledge of it. It's that you didn't go through the technical, pass a budget amendment ideally before you spend it. If not, go back behind and do that, just so you stay in compliance. If the state, you know how things are, if the state ever came in, that's one of the things they would ding you on. And other people will read that too sometimes and just use that to say, well, you're not staying in compliance with that. So recommended to do that. And the other is more on the accounting side of things. So you don't do a lot of journal entries here, most everything is a very transactional. The cash comes in, the cash goes out, you're recording all of that. But journal entries are made and again, most all of the accounting is in, with Kim. So when you have one person, and even if you have multiple people in there, journal entries should always be reviewed by somebody else. So the journal entry should be printed out, support should be put with that and somebody should approve. They should understand why that journal entry is being made because it, it's definitely a way to have errors or manipulate the accounting or have fraud. So, and it's something the accounting industry is really pushing, is reviewing. That we used to have to take a sample of the journal entries and now we put it all through a big program and then algorithms and all this and then test all journal entries made. So we're looking for that. Did you guys have some procedures in place? Because you really don't, we're not your internal controls and you certainly don't want us to find manipulation in your financial statements after the fact. So that's our other recommendation is that you put something in place where, you know, they could have, that, you know, since Kim is the only one, maybe the city administrator, you know, Kathy could look at that at some point and review it and say, yeah, those, those journal entries, even if you're not an accountant, the reasoning behind them and looking at, yeah, does that make sense that we move this from? Because you're basically moving something from one place to the other with a journal entry without moving cash, not having a cash transaction. So only two recommendations that we had related to the financial. The other thing that we did this year, because you had $2.7 million in federal funds and expenditures, and normally that would trigger what's called a single audit. Well, all of yours was in the, not all, about 80% of it related to your ARPA money that, the SL FRF funds. They allow if that, if you take that off of your total federal funds and see what's left, if that, if the non-ARPA money was less than 750, we could do an alternative compliance audit on just your ARPA funds. And so that's what we did. It's a lot easier to go through that than going through a single audit. And your compliance, we issued a report on that and everything was in compliance. It was in great shape, so. And your stuff is always in great shape, your accounting records are in great shape. We always have a really nice auditor, get a lot of help and get the information that we need, so. And again, I talked really fast, then I go through a lot of numbers because again, we don't change what, the way you guys manage. We don't make a lot of journal entries when we hear, have a lot of findings. But can I answer any questions for you while I'm here? As I speed through everything? All right, well, we really appreciate the opportunity to come here. We've been coming here for a long time and so we appreciate how good you keep everything and we always, of course, appreciate being able to do the audits of the communities that we work and live in and stuff.
Thank you very much and happy we got a good, good report card from you, so.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is an RBA for the recognition of Richard Sheets. So Alderman Wilson, Alderman Johnson both serve on the MML, the Missouri Municipal League. They are the representatives to the MML for Darden Prairie. And in addition to all the other things that they both do, and they're both very engaged in acting in the community, they take the time out of their, their schedules to continue to serve in the capacity, capacity. Same as this gentleman, Richard Sheets has served as, in addition to his other duties as alderman and regular day job and so on. So Alderman Wilson, Alderman Johnson have put it on the agenda and they've got a couple of things I'm sure they like to say about recognizing their fellow MML member. And so over to you, Mark and Ryan.
You go first, I'll go next.
I've been working with MML ever since I've been an alderman and now I serve as a board member there now and working with Richard Sheets and Kim can contest to this. He, he's been very instrumental in taking care of our government affairs in Jeff City and working with all the cities. He's also part of the education portion of it too, and he's dedicated a lot of time and put forth a lot of effort. I think we can come up with some kind of monetary value of a gift card or something that the city could possibly donate to his retirement.
Yeah, and to that point, he has definitely helped out with conferences that I've been to and making me, making sure that I understand what I need to do for Missouri as well as the city of Darning Prairie. So he's very helpful and I, I agree, a small donation or small something for him for his time. I think it's 40 plus years, is that right? Is it 40 plus years? We need to do something to thank him for all the things he has done for us.
I'd like to consider a motion of a, a card and a hundred dollar gift card if that's acceptable with the board.
Can I ask a question? Is this normal practice to do things like that, to recognize people?
Somebody that has served for so many years for serving the cities and that, yes, it is.
Yeah.
We've done it before in the past.
I, I didn't say, I don't know about the past, but I know it's a big deal. And he has, like I said, 40 years for MML, working with everything he's done. And I, I know others are doing it, I would say, other cities are, other cities, other municipalities are doing it. So that's why I put this forward.
Okay, so having a quick conversation sidebar with the city attorney, and I think that there may be a bit of a conflict with the city spending money on this. I, I do want to lead on this effort though, and I will contribute $20 out of my pocket to this to, to put something together instead of a, instead of an official vote.
We can't do anything with the city?
So, you know, I, I think that we could probably just take it offline at this point. We, we've got it on the agenda, we've, we've stated our public support for Mr. Sheets and his years of service is the executive director of the MML. But I think that in this case, we'll probably be better off sourcing it internally and then recognizing it that way versus spending city money.
Okay.
So, okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks guys for bringing this up, great, great topic and yeah, we'll certainly ensure we recognize Mr. Sheets from the Darden Prairie Board of Aldermen and Staff, whoever wants to contribute. And thanks for leading the effort on that. Alderman Wilson, Alderman Johnson. Okay, next up on the agenda is something that I have put on here, so I'll talk to this. I put an RBA forward regarding the office and boardroom furniture. You know, it's, it's something that, there's a couple of different reasons why I think it's the right time to start to look at recapitalization of the furniture that we have. We start here with the chairs that we have in the boardroom. I know some of these are extremely dated. And the chair that I, that I'm sitting on, I've heard rumored, actually came from Jeff's, Jeff's workshop years and years ago. So there's really never been any big capital investment in furniture and the furniture we have is broken, outdated, and these chairs I think are a good place to start. I've had multiple surgeries on my back and neck and for me, it's extremely important to have good ergonomic support to kind of, especially when we have meetings that sometimes last up to two hours. And I know for the past couple of years, it's been on my mind and I know I've talked to several other aldermen who feel the same way. Now, I looked at that and I look at the office furniture that we have and some of our staff and especially the ones that sit in front of their desks and computers all day. There's really not a lot of ergonomic consideration with the older desks that are 15 to 20 years old. Some of those are also aging as well and a lot of them are cobbled together with furniture that we may have gotten from other tenants that have served and have rented from our community years ago. So in, in an effort to bring some continuity to that and bring ergonomic features to help the health and morale of our city staff, I wanted to kind of look into buying some new furniture for the, you know, for the, for the boardroom, chairs for the boardroom as well as desks and chairs for the upstairs suites that we have to kind of start from there. And then a phase two will be budgeted in next year for the remaining amount of furniture in the downstairs office suites as well. This also is, you know, your city staff and, and you know, you know, the health and safety is important, but this, this also is really important part of what we're trying to do with modernization of the IT infrastructure within our city as well. The desks from 15 years ago are designed to have desktop computers and they're just not really designed to accommodate some of the newer technology like thin clients and some of the different, you know, when you have cloud computing and things. So, and, and because those, those are more modern designs, they're more, you know, they have mounts for dual monitors that can slide around and they're much more friendly to the IT that we're going to integrate in as well. So there's, there's a cup, there's a couple of different reasons for doing this. And I wanted to open up the conversation to the board, you know, I'm certainly looking for the board's support in this to, to move forward and get this, get this moving forward. It's, it's, it's part of the plan to move and upgrade our, our aging IT infrastructure and move into the cloud, you know, with our IT hardware and move into the cloud in the backend of it. So I wanted to open up the floor to any of the aldermen who had any questions or any wanted to discuss this any further. What about?
While I hear and understand the concern that you've expressed, where I am leaning is towards expanding this project, if you will, to take into consideration the other techno, or the technologies, for lack of a better term, to come, to get an understanding, you know, an in-depth report now that we have an IT person that can give us perspective of what our current systems are and what the recommendations for the replacement would be. And then how that would then marry up with the furnishings that we are looking to replace. I'm not against the idea of the replacement, but I think we've limited ourselves without taking into consideration the technology.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Alderman Waters. I want to speak that a little bit. In my personal, you know, so what I do in my day jobs, put it that way. The technology we're moving towards is increasingly going towards everything being in the cloud. So your compute power used to be on your desktop and you'd have compute and storage in a big tower on your desk or it would be under your desk and it would be bulky and have a lot of cords coming out and put out, you know, a lot of heat if you had a bunch in a room, that could be problematic as well. So that's moved into, you know, more compact computers and laptops and things that still have that. But now as we move into technology moving forward, especially in the last five years with remote technology becoming so advanced in this, and you know, on the heels of COVID, cloud computing is really where everything has gone and will continue to go towards. And, and where we've studied it from, you know, capacity of looking to do exactly that, but it, you know, for my day job was without, you know, going into great depth. We've studied that exactly and where we're at now in the majority of corporate America is where there's a standard thin client that might have some limited compute power on the desktop, limited to no storage and all that computing is, is done in the cloud. But then it goes to zero client is the next architecture where you'd have really just almost, you know, like something just a little bit bigger than this that would just plug up under there and you're, you're just, it is just, it's an interface between everything in the cloud. And there's, it's just a protocol carrier. So that's kind of where the, so just, so to answer your question, it's already, that's something that we've already considered and given my background and I know that we've talked to Rose and I've already, one of the first things we talked about was that, Kathy and I have talked in great depth and detail about that. And this furniture will accommodate that because it's, it's, you know, is the form factor of the workstations at your desk become smaller and smaller. That's what this, it, it enables more opportunities for ergonomic design and that's where this request is coming from. It is moving exactly in that direction. So I don't know if that answers the question and I would happy to have Rose do, you know, more of a, and a, a report to you, you know, to you and the board if that's something you like to see. But I just wanted to make it clear that this, this is, this is kind of my bread and butter outside of what I do here as a mayor. Yeah, so that's kind of, they're kind of the two, two separate things. So the, this is a part of the reason why we needed to get the furniture or why I would like to, you know, upgrade the furniture. Part of it's also for morale and, you know, health of the staff and those that sit in front of the desk every day and, and don't have the option to have a sit-stand desk or don't have any ergonomic design on the old aging monitors that are there. And so that, that's, you know, the ability to mount monitors in a more ergonomic friendly design is something that's a part of it. But separately from that, there is, when we did hire, recently we hired Rose Mareska, who is our new IT admin, our IT manager for the city. Rose is, brings a great deal of experience and knowledge in, in managing a lot of corporate technologies across this broad spectrum of disciplines within the IT realm. So I've asked our IT manager with Kathy to produce a 90-day, in 90 days, produce kind of a report of exactly what you just said, so we will find that soon. If you'd like to, you know, if the board would like to wait and vote on the furniture until then, that would be the board's prerogative. But I do see that this is not being solely for that, it will only advance that. So I would, I would, you know, just ask the board to consider that this is for, for multiple reasons, for technology, but it's also for. Okay.
And I want to add on to that, I do understand and agree with what you're saying. I, I want every, I want the city officials to have everything, city office to have everything. Just know the cost is very important to me because I agree, I want it all for them and they're doing a great job and I want to continue it. But having everything and doing everything at once is like, I think, will that help, help our budget? Because we will have everything at once.
So, so the intention is to start with this and then we kind of take one bite of the apple at a time and then as we go to, you know, budget in the next year, we can work in the rest of the city into the following year's budget and, you know.
For budget reasons then, is that what it is? Okay, then that, that's probably the, a good reason to start with if it's for budget reasons.
So we have money in the budget for what we've put in today and it's an opportunity for us to take the step in the right direction. And then when we do the whole city, well, this will give us a sampling of if this is the right way or not. So we're, we're going to upgrade and update and then as we go forward, any, any tweaks and adjustments we make when we update for the whole city, we can do that. But it's not, again, not just for IT and technology, it's more for what's right for our city.
I can answer that question. So the process we used is we identified two furniture vendors, design vendors for furniture for offices. We met with each of them, talked to them about budgetary considerations and got preliminary proposals from them. Through those companies, we can then purchase cooperatively. So on a national level, these furniture products are bid out. And so first of all, you're getting the advantage of competitive pricing on a national level. And then second of all, there's discounts that are applied through that because we are a government entity. I'm sorry, I was just going to say, just to be clear, at this point, we're looking for budgetary approval to move forward. We will come back with the procurement recommendation that talks about and demonstrates what furniture we're looking at purchasing, what the layouts are for the offices and the discounted pricing for that and the total.
Any, any additional comments on this? At this point, I'd like to entertain a, a motion to approve the, move forward with the process of acquiring furniture for, you know, for the stated reasons in the RBA. Moved by Alderman Gettlemeyer, second by Alderman Detwiler. All in favor? Any opposed? None heard, motion passes. Next up is an RBA from our city engineer. For those in the audience that may not be aware, last year was our last year with St. Charles County performing snow removal for our city. They have downs, from what I understand, defer to the city administrator to correct me in any way if I'm wrong, where they've downsized their staff and they have eliminated some of the customer base that they supported. We previously had a contract with them where they maintained our city streets in the same time that they maintain county roads. But that was for certain cities, Darden Prairie being one of them, that was terminated last year and we have. And we have been put out to find our own. So in doing that, I will look over to our city engineer here to give us an update on where we are with that and with the, yeah. All right. Where we're going. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
My RBA is over the proposal award and agreement for the snow and ice removal services for the winter season of 2025, 26. The city issued a request for proposals for snow and plow ice removal services. The scope included plowing and salting of designated city streets during winter weather events. We solicited the 26 companies and received one bid submitted by Scharf Construction. We recommend awarding the snow and plow ice removal services to Scharf Construction, utilizing the unit rates included in the proposal excluding their flat seasonal rate. I, I chose to do this rather than choosing the flat seasonal rate because using their unit prices fit better in our budget.
Any questions, Matt? Any, any questions from the board on, on the services?
Yeah, I have a question. Is that what's, what is meant by estimated cost per winter event? Equals approximately 15,000.
Yeah, that's using their unit bid prices and our lane miles and their man hours, estimated man hours and stuff along those lines.
Okay.
Yeah. It's about 15, if you, if you do the math, it's about 15,000 per applicant or per, per event.
We only got, we only got one bid.
One bid.
One responsive bid. One good bid, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah. And I compared to other municipalities bids as well, and they were, they're about in the same range. So this bid wasn't super high or anything along those lines. It's a, it was a good competitive bid.
The other thing is the contract includes performance standards. So the, we have assurances on their performance.
So Matt, on these, on this bid, do we specify the amount of snow that they come out and plow on? Or is it just strictly at their discretion?
It's at our discretion. We can call them out whenever we want. So, I mean, any, anytime the temperature drops below 32, we can have them out there applying salt. If snow is on the ground, we can call them out.
Okay. I just know that many times the county was in my subdivision when there was no need to plow those streets. And I think the plowing is what, especially when they go around the corner, is what tears up the concrete.
Correct.
And so I'm hoping that, you know, maybe some of this will save some of the streets by not doing it as often if, if it's really not necessary. So, okay.
Brine. So that was included in their bid. We probably won't use it because their unit price submitted was very high. It was almost every application from my math was almost $130,000 per application, which is pretty much our entire budget on one application of brine. So we will probably just use salt. They're from St. Charles. Yeah, they currently do snow removal for Boeing along with Amazon. And I guess they have done work with St. Charles County in the past.
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct.
Okay. So this will come up in the regular agenda where we'll be able to vote on that. And is that something we're looking to get two readings on tonight or is that one? Just one reading? Okay. Yeah. Well, with this weather, I mean, after last, I mean, I enjoy the cooler weather, but I just like, it's a 30 degree difference during the day. Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Matt. Moving on, looks like this, this is going to be a report from Kathy. So we had probably a couple of months ago, we had some discussion around the 10 acres and maybe what we could potentially do with that in the future. Alderman Nay had brought up some ideas around a community center and a recreation center. And the board has requested a study of sorts be done around the viability of this alternative for our city owned 10 acre lot next to on the corner of the road up here. So Kathy has provided us a pretty detailed report. And I think she's going to walk through, walk us through that. So, city administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor explained, I was asked to review and prepare a financial analysis on the feasibility of a community recreation center and what the financial impact would be to the city. In the board packet, I provided that report and I noted that it was created through a deep research AI search engine, and then I cross checked it with another AI platform to fact check it before I presented it to you all. It's consistent with my own knowledge and experience over the last 34 years related to recreation centers. Community, community recreation centers are not typically self sustaining. They operate with a national subsidy of 65 to 75% on average. And Missouri cities tend to mirror those same national trends with public rec centers requiring community taxpayers support. It depends on your amenities. If you have, you know, ice sheets of ice and pools, those are obviously going to be more expensive features. Not only from a capital perspective, but from an ongoing maintenance and in particular pools from a labor standpoint to support through, you know, lifeguards and things like that. So you know, just, just looking at a general recreation center that did not include those two features. I think we would be looking at capital costs in the 18, 15, eight to 15 million range. And operating costs would be expected to fall between 500,000 a year and one and a half million dollars. Again, the largest component in those is generally the labor to support them. And then any, you know, HVAC systems and things like that that are needed to support rec center spaces. The recommendation that I would have, if the city is interested in moving forward further with a, a community center would that, it would be very important for us to establish a reliable funding source for this. I don't think we want to rely on general fund money to support this kind of a substitute subsidy. We currently have a parks and stormwater half cent sales tax and it generates about $750,000 annually. But of that, we don't really have any available spend. We have $250,000 for debt service. In our current parks, recreation and storm stormwater operating expenses are budgeted for the remaining approximately 500,000. We have over $250,000 just in labor costs currently to support our parks and recreation and stormwater services. And then this isn't including really any significant capital investment in any of our amenities. And it does not include any stormwater projects, which is a reminder, we are going to be moving forward on a stormwater master study. And long term through that, I think we would identify stormwater projects that are needed in our community and may need funding resources for that. So I'm concerned about having available app allocation out of what we currently generate in a sales tax. So that summarizes my findings, again, through, through the research that I did, assisted research that I did on this topic. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board on the findings from city administrator?
No, thank you, Kathy, for your, everything you did.
No questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Kathy, for that. Back up to my agenda here. All right. So that leaves us to the last item on for discussion and consideration, which is the regular, regular Board of Aldermen meeting agenda. Has anybody, does anybody have any questions on the items that we'll be voting on or discussing in the regular board meeting? None heard. Okay. All right. With that, we will go to staff communication. City attorney? City engineer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So let's start off. The city's staff is moving forward with a contract with TransMap Corporation to complete a right away asset inventory. TransMap currently holds a competitively negotiated contract with St. Charles County. Has already performed similar inventory services for several municipalities in the region. As part of the county's broader asset management initiative, they have agreed to cover costs to inventory all city maintained roadways. The city will contact, contract directly with TransMap to expand the scope and include additional right away features such as sign sidewalks, curb ramps, pay up markings and other visible infrastructure assets. The data collected will support asset management, GIS integration and capital planning efforts, helping the city better track existing infrastructure and prioritize future maintenance. This contract is being pursued under a competitively, competitive negotiated exception due to the cost advantage and coordination benefits of adding onto the county's existing agreement. Also, the city of O'Fallon is currently performing some trail maintenance on Fizey Road. They have agreed, they have extended, they, they have agreed to include a small segment of trails located in Darton Prairie. In their project scope, this coordinated work allows for the work to be completed efficiently and eliminate the need for the city to contract repairs separately. This work will be in a intergovernmental agreement that I'll bring forward to the next board meeting on August 20th. The work is not to exceed $6,000. Also, the city has received a surface transportation block grant through the East West Gateway Council of Governments for the Weldon Spring Improvement Project. This federal funded funding will be administered by MoDOT through an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. The agreement outlines the terms and conditions for reimbursements of eligible projects cost, including design, right away acquisition and construction. Execution of this agreement is a required step in securing the federal funds and move forwards project. For this, I am requesting two readings this meeting. Also, I have put exhibits in front of everyone. A, a big issue within the city is MoDOT mowing the right of ways. It is known that we can enter into an agreement as a city with MoDOT to then mow the right of ways of, of MoDOT inside city limits. Other municipalities such as Wentzville and O'Fallon already utilize this. And so if, if you guys would like, we can move forward with working on agreement with MoDOT to then take over mowing services for MoDOT right of ways.
Can you, can you go a little deeper about the mowing? I, I'm, I'm really intrigued about this.
Say what?
Can, yeah. How many times, like, can you give me a little more information about the mowing? And like, do you have like points where we're going to mow or how many times we're going to mow?
We can mow, we can, if with this agreement, we could decide where we want to mow.
Okay.
And then how many times, I mean, it'd be up to us at that point. We can mow as many times as we feel is needed in that area. So like at Brian Road where the sidewalks, you know, are way overgrown, we can mow that every week along with everything else. And then other areas along in, maybe it doesn't need to be mowed every week, but once a month. So you're not getting the real tall grass, you know? So just, it, it, it could all be determined in that agreement with MoDOT.
So we would, you know, right now, since, you know, we don't have that and we don't own it, we're, we're, we're we're looking to formalize an agreement. We're engaging with MoDOT to formalize an agreement right now. So we're actively engaged. But what we're going to look for right now is, is a vote from the board to approve the city, since we don't own it. You know, normally I could say as mayor, go cut that grass if we own the city and the city staff goes and does it, or Kathy or whoever. But in this case, we don't own the property. So we're looking for board support. So we're all moving forward in this to go over and cut somebody else's grass until they give us permission to do it. Is that accurately stated?
Yes.
So with that, I would ask the board if there's any other questions. If, you know, if not, we'll look for, you know, show hands basically here in a second to see who, who supports it and who doesn't. For us to go and cut MoDOT until we formalize an agreement with them.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
How far down end are you going to cut?
It would be, it'd be to the city limits of what we own. Yeah.
Okay.
Or the city limits, not what we own, but yeah, city limits.
If you're going, and I don't know the direction, but if you're going from Brian to K, down in. But when you get before you get to Bates subdivision, O'Fallon has put up a sign that says, welcome to O'Fallon. When you're coming from the other direction, after you pass Dearburg's parking lot, you will see a sign that says, welcome to Darton Prairie. One of those signs are in the wrong place, I believe. Now, O'Fallon just put their sign up in the last nine months or so. But where they have their sign is just where it says, MoDOT's
Maintenance ends.
Maintenance ends, right. So I don't know if our city doesn't start down as far as, I know it's jagged on the borders, but we might want to look at
Yeah.
that sign. If it's not in the correct place, we should move it to the correct place.
Great. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Us, we, we would be responsible for the mowing. I don't think so. They mow their one.
They used to mow it six times a year.
Yeah.
Then they went four times a year. Now they'll mow it twice a year.
We would have to look into that. Yeah. Correct. Yeah, we'd probably have to.
Johnson, could you turn your microphone on, please?
Yeah, because I believe you have, you're going to have man hours, material, breakdown equipment, you know, how long is the mower is going to last? To mow all that grass when they're responsible for doing.
But I think that it's at our discretion though. And, and so they may continue, we will, you know, it's, you know, we would, we'd be able to do it at our discretion when and how we saw it fit.
So it's more of getting permission for us to do it if we want to do it.
Correct.
Can I just sum it up that way? Okay. That, that makes more sense to me than
Yep.
because I mean, if we start scheduling employees to mow that, I mean, that could get quite expensive. And then you got equipment to break down and stuff like that.
It's, we're in a difficult situation now because we have heard from a lot of residents who are unhappy with that. And and so we run into this chat, and I'm sure you're aware of it, you know, we see it all over the city. But in these particular cases and that big red area right there, we've talked about it half a dozen times. We've talked about it a hundred times here, I feel like. So this just gives us the opportunity to be responsive to our residents and who, who, who are expressing concern when that happens. And hopefully, you know, we don't, we know, we're not going to go out there and just incorporate it into our schedule, but.
I want to make sure everybody understood, this isn't a, a schedule that we're going to mow all the time. It's going to be when, when as needed.
Yeah, but I do think that we'll, we'll, we'll be out there as well. And if, if we see it needs attention, you know, you know, we will, if we get a complaint or concern, we can be responsive as well as we know that we can go if it, we can see it getting out of hand, we can then go and, you know, our, our staff can go in and address it ahead of time before it gets to be a problem.
In this agreement, it's also not going to stop them from doing their regular mowing, which is only a couple of times a year, but.
I haven't read the, we don't have an agreement yet. So.
Well, I mean, I want to make sure that's still in there too. So.
I don't think that's the intention. Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of things to look at when you're making an agreement like this.
Yeah. Our expectation is that they would still mow it the twice a year that they do, but that doesn't meet our, it's clear to us from the concerns that that doesn't meet our community standard. And the only way to remedy that is for us to take over additional mowing. So this would be for the city to do additional mowings.
And I, and I understand that. I just want to make sure we weren't going to be mowing every week out there. Make a side of the road. It's great.
It'll just make you go out there. You got a lot of free time, don't you? You, you got a lot of free time, don't you?
Well, the Ward Three people lived on that side where the Ward Two people and some of the Ward One people lived, they would be screaming a lot louder than we are. So when you complain about trails not being done, I have to sit and look at three and four-foot tall weeds most of the summer long because MoDOT doesn't do its job. So I don't care if our people have to go out there once a month. We deserve the city to look nice on that side of the city.
Okay. So they entertain a motion to approve the city staff to proactively maintain the MoDOT right-of-ways as needed until such an agreement can be reached between the city and MoDOT for a long-term, um, plan for maintenance, periodic maintenance on those areas. Did I word that? Uh, motion by Alderman Gettemeyer, seconded by Alderman Detweiler. All in favor? Any opposed? None heard. Okay, the ayes have it. Motion passes. Okay, back to you, City Engineer.
Yes. Also, starting Friday, construction on Town Square Avenue will commence. Um, Monday and Tuesday will be the mainline paving. It'll be, they'll be starting bright and early. It'll be long days. We'll be milling one half of the road from start to the end, which is, starts gonna be the very west side, which will be the bridge over I-64. They will start there in the morning and end all the way down to Brian-Wing Haven intersection. It'll be milled, and then instantly behind will be the paver. Um, it'll, so I mean, we'll start with an old road, end the day with a brand-new road on half the road, next morning come in, brand-new road on the other side of the road. It, it may be a little traffic jam congestion for those two days, but it's best to get it done and out of the way. And I think everyone will be happy with the new roadway. Um, there'll be some finishing up work for the rest of the week. But just be on the lookout for that. I also think, he hasn't sent me the, uh, traffic control staging so far for this, but I think for Monday and Tuesday with us being cut down to just half the roadway, the town square will be limited to traffic only eastbound for, during the working days, during the working time. So there may be some slight delays, some little detours. But just know, it's only two days, and when it's done, we'll have a brand-new, beautiful road without big, big humps by post road and Haley Road.
Okay, thank you.
And then also, uh, starting next week, eight eleven, MoDOT is closing Technology Road over by, between, I guess, Barrett Haven and Wing Haven. That is starting eight eleven, and that closure is due to be, or is going to be through the end of the year. They didn't have a date of when it would be done. It just said August eleventh through the end of 2025. Um, I have, I have been in communication with the area engineer over there, Andy Turk. Um, and they are going to do whatever they can to kind of keep non-local traffic off our roads. I've already went out and videotaped all of our roads for inspections to make sure if there is any additional traffic. We have, we have video evidence that our roads were already in this condition, and the additional traffic gonna bring it, break it up. But they have claimed they will place extra no-local traffic signs throughout the area, along with having their inspector, um, their inspector on site monitor the roadways.
Thank you. Any other mitigation that we're doing as a city that you would be able to share with us?
That is all I have.
Okay.
The traffic counters, I, I know I'd mentioned traffic counters. MoDOT is not for that, and we, we don't have any, so.
Okay.
There's nothing I could do there. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's gonna get bombarded, and, and we're gonna get complaints unbelievably. And that's where we're definitely need, gonna need our police officers watching that too. Because you're gonna get people late for work and stuff like that, and they're gonna be, that's gonna be a thoroughfare. And I'm glad you, I'm, I'm glad you videoed all that, because I'm sure with that additional traffic, it's gonna wear our roads there. Big time.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, um.
They can stop off in Keith's house and they have coffee in the morning.
Yeah, probably that much traffic. I'm sorry, what can we do internally? Uh, you know, I think that we need, we may need to have a discussion about what we can do internally, get a traffic counter there. Because I, I, I share, uh, as a resident of that, you know, area over there, I share the same concerns that Alderman Johnson has with the uptick of traffic. We've seen what happened with road closure off of, uh, uh, Weldon Springs and Crusher, and, uh, how that affected it. But the volume of traffic that goes down Technology every day, you know, we don't know where everybody's going, but it's a significant amount of traffic. And, uh, if you got, if they, if that's where they're used to going, they're gonna start coming down Weldon Spring and Barrett Haven, cutting through there, and then the same way in the morning, and it's gonna really have an impact. So, uh, again, you know, you know, the videotaping, the Barrett Haven Boulevard is good, uh, but, you know, it's, sorry, kind of in bad shape anyway, but, but either way, it's not gonna get any better with that amount of traffic. And then you're also gonna have the, the, the sheer volume and just the headaches with that and potential access, things like that. So I would like to, um, you know, look at what other options we have for, if we can't get it before it starts, we had a traffic study done there about a year ago.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and at that time, we, it was upgraded to a collector road. Now, we have a baseline within the last year of what it would be. So, uh, I, you know, I think that we, we should look to, uh, and, and we probably can do it at, at the next meeting, but come back with options of, you know, I think, what other, you know, internally or a s- s- a small job for a, a v- a vendor that we work with to set up traffic counters to, once the, you know, the work starts, to see where we stand there, to really understand, though. And then we have something to go back with MoDOT with as well.
Yeah.
So I don't know, go ahead.
Um, one of the other things that I think is critical for us at this point, given the, uh, shortcomings of the notice that we receive relative to Weldon Springs and Crusher, uh, what are we doing or what are we prepared to do, uh, to help our citizens along Weldon Spring and along heading, with understanding of, of the impact of that road closure, technology being closed? How they, you know, what's a, so do we have something on the website? Are we sending out a mailer? Are we notifying HOAs? You know, what are we doing proactively as a city to let the people that live in that area that are, are citizens know?
Yeah, it was posted to Facebook today.
Today?
Today.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I sent out, um, an email about it on the 21st, but, you know, that wasn't out to the public.
Right.
To, today, I guess MoDOT put out their closure information on Facebook a couple of days ago, and we, we just reshared it, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I didn't know whether we were doing more than just that, because I mean, not, not everybody that lives there play, you know, plays the Facebook game. You know, and so I'm wondering whether, if we don't have a, you know, another way of putting word out, whether we have email addresses of people.
On the website, I think we at least ought to put it on the website.
Yeah, I believe it's on the website as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, and this is something too, you know, so the email distribution list and one of the, you know, Rose has, Rose is gonna be really busy. Uh, we've got a lot lined up for her in her new portfolio. Uh, one of the things that's gonna fall under there is communication, uh, which in this case, you're talking about digital communication pathways, be it website, email, phones, you know, we just, so there's, there's a lot of options, and, and we're gonna improve, uh, how we do business in that direction moving forward. Uh, but to your point in the timeliness, yes, you know, we're, we're trying to get it out ahead of it in this, in this case. Uh, but how we do that is gonna also improve, and we're working on that as well internally, so. Almost every day. Little jungle back there. Yep. Matt, you wanna? Matt, Matt, you wanna take a look at that?
It's Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, well, that's pretty close to Mark. He probably rides a lawnmower over there. Nothing, all right. Tough crowd. All right, thanks, Jeff. Uh, any, anything else?
I do have one more thing. Um, the Stony Brook Culverts. That project, if you all can remember, was a replacement of the culverts in Stony Brook. There's three culverts. Uh, we awarded the design to Oates Associates for $21,000. The subdivision was originally plotted in 1978, and the culverts were not placed in drain adjustments. So now when we're getting this design together, getting ready for the work, we figure out there is no drain adjustments. So there is a change, Oates Associates has proposed a change order to prepare, um, to do additional surveying and prepare six legal descriptions for these, um, dr- drain adjustments. This change order is about $7,500. Um, looking forward for, uh, your approval. I can put this as an RBA in the next meeting if it need to be. But just thought I'd let you all know. Yeah, look, it's not, it's not like, um, like, real pressing right now. The, the paving's got pushed to next year. We weren't able to meet that deadline. So if need to be, we could, we can move it to next week. That's all I have.
Okay, um, City Administrator.
Thank you. Well, we're excited to announce that Rose Mareska has joined the city as our new IT manager. She started on Monday. Um, she brings over 20 years of technology leadership experience with a strong background in IT strategy, cybersecurity, cloud integration, and project management, all of the things you've heard us talking about this evening. Um, and we're confident in her ability to lead us through those transitions. Um, she's previously served as the Director of Technology for Larson Financial and Dent Wizard International, um, where she successfully led major initiatives, including cloud migrations, AI integration planning, ERP transition, transitions, I know that probably doesn't mean anything to most of us, and, um, acquisition technology strategies. So we're excited to have her on board. Uh, I did wanna provide an update on the no parking, no stopping, no standing signs. Um, as a follow-up to the meeting, there were two questions that came up. Um, one was what was gonna be the cost related to those two signs? Um, the, the signs, the posts, um, together are $191.28, and then there'll be some staff labor to install those signs, so probably under $300 to put in those two signs. The signs have been ordered, uh, they should be in, I think, next week, and staff will get them installed as soon as they, they come in. We want, we certainly wanna get them in place before school starts. And then to answer the question that was asked, what are the parking fines? Um, parking fines are $82. I also wanted to share with the board and the public that the public hearing regarding the rezoning of the property located at 2108 and 2128 Bates Road will be postponed until September 10th at 7:00 PM. The applicant has not provided all the necessary information for the hearing, including notice to the property owners within 300 feet. I think that covers it for me.
Thanks, Kathy. Alderman? Okay. We're a few minutes behind, so I will, Alderman, uh, have elected to hold their comments to the regular session. The mayor's up next, I will do the same. Uh, I'm gonna give a motion to adjourn the work session. Moved by Alderman Gettemeyer, or Gettemeyer, and seconded by Alderman Johnson. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned. We will take. We will take.